Mask policies and other policies as they see fit. The implementation of which obviously is subject to collective bargaining relative to any change to the unionized staffing working conditions. Whether and when a particular school committee should require universal masking, require masking only of the unvaccinated, or make masking entirely optional requires careful consideration of many complexities. For the purpose of keeping all students and staff healthy while maximizing full in-person learning and attendance, we conducted a full review of the July 30th, 2021 DESI and Mass Department of Public Health Joint Guidance on Mask Wearing for the opening of the 21-22 school year. In addition to reviewing the guidance, I met with many school administrators, all of them to be exact, our school nurses and our town health nurse, to assist in constructing a recommendation to the school committee for the implementation of the guidance. So I will give you a brief overview of some bullet points of the things that we reviewed. We took review and input from all the administration relative to the guidance and our capacity to implement each one of their recommendations. We reviewed input from the school's health department related to the guidance and our capacity to implement the recommendation. We conducted a review with the town health nurse along with our own school health nurse about the vaccination rates of students ages 12 to 19 and the community's current COVID-19 positive testing trends. We reviewed our prior practice related to the DESI and DPH recommendations and guidance, and it's important to note that since March 16th of 2020, we have consistently responded to and implemented the guidance of the Department of Education. We looked at the vaccination rates in the greater community, working on and focusing in on our school-specific rates in the past and in the present. We looked at in-school transmission rates. It's important to note that we had zero in-school transmission last year. That was with full mitigation, six-foot distancing, and continuous mask wearing of all of our students and staff, which during last year was not only a mandate of the Department of Education, it was not a recommendation, it was a mandate, it was also a mandate of the governor because we were in a state of emergency. Meredith Hurley is going to come in and talk a little bit about what that reflected in terms of our school, in terms, you know, as far as numbers, total number of children that were, had tested positive. So she'll come in and give you some review on that. We did a review of the evidence of the prevalence of the Delta variant and other variants impacting our children and adolescents in the town of Winthrop, so Meredith will speak a little bit about that. We reviewed our current town municipal mandate on mask wearing. Not sure if folks are familiar with that, but right now in municipal buildings, all employees of municipal buildings, exclusive of the school at this moment, are expected to wear masks when on the property. We also reviewed the feasibility and efficacy of other layered mitigation strategies in our district, such as the impacts of an optional mask wearing related to the challenges that may be come before us with contact tracing resulting potentially in rates of, higher rates of students needing to quarantine. We looked at viable social distance options that we have for our school district that would allow full in-person learning for all of our students. We looked at, again, the availability of our outdoor space. We reviewed how we could monitor vaccination statuses while implementing masking, whether it be mandated or unmandated. We looked at our working and learning conditions, so our classroom space, the spaces that we took over last year when we were six-foot distancing in our, and then in our cafeterias, and the impacts that that had on our school. So we use other spaces such as the gym, common learning areas that had previously been used for teaching and learning spaces. So we looked at those again. And also, we looked at the estimated vaccination rate of our staffing, so all of our teachers and the rest of our staffing. We put out a survey to see how many of our staff members were currently vaccinated, and again, that's a survey, it was not mandatory for people to answer, however, in a few short days, we had quite a few people answer. As a matter of fact, as of today, we had 155 staff members, primarily teachers and other working members within our classrooms tell us that they, 155 out of 161, revealed that they were vaccinated. We also participated in a number of, the Department of Education meetings that happened in the last two weeks regarding additional testing that's going to be offered by the state for schools at no cost. Anytime somebody says no cost, there's a cost, so we're still looking into that. And we also participated in another discussion with the Department of Education about the new rules regarding contact tracing. It's important to understand that on July 19th, the Department of Education and the state of Massachusetts removed all of the COVID protocols and mandates for school districts on the 19th. And then on July 30th, just a few short weeks later, issued their newest guidance which has been sent out to parents. So, and it remains that distancing is still not required, as well as new contact tracing protocols. So there's not been a lot of time for us to review those. Two things that we still need more time to review and work with our nursing staff on, and that's the protocols for contact tracing and how we're going to be implementing those. They're a little bit different. And, and the testing being offered by the state. There's a couple of options for pool testing. We currently use binax testing and have all school year where symptomatic students or employees can come to one of our school nurses and receive a rapid COVID test. And, and we've done that, and we had planned, irregardless of the guidance, to continue to do that. And now the state of Massachusetts is offering a different type of testing using binax, but a little bit more frequent in schools, like they did, similar to the pool testing that they did last year. What's unclear still to us, even though there's only two weeks before school opens for our staff, it's still unclear how that can be implemented in our schools, whether it be with our staffing or staffing that's provided by the state. There's COVID funds to cover costing, but it's, it's more the implementation of it and how that gets rolled out within the schools, because, one, it may come for free, but it's definitely not going to come without a fair amount of organization. So we have additional meetings with our nursing staff and Meredith Hurley, along with the Department of Public Health and the Department of Education to learn more about those two things in the coming days. So how does the review of this implement, how does it play into the guidance that's been offered? I want to summarize some key points of the guidance. And again, the guidance is for the school committee and the school superintendent. It is them telling us what they believe we should be doing in the fall. And then it becomes up to us to say how we can, what we agree with and how we can implement it. Doing that in 30 days certainly is not a preferred activity for superintendents in the Commonwealth because it is not a one- or two-step process. So I'm going to touch on a few of the key points, and as I touch on the key points, I will give you, I'll make a comment that's reflective of all that work that I just talked about doing. In the meantime, I must say, we received quite a bit of public comment, emails from parents, some really nice emails, supportive of the school district and supportive of the understanding of the timeframe that we're under with the state and the, and the timing of their change in the way we're doing business within schools. So one of the key points, I'll start with number one, is that all schools are required to be full in-person, full-time, five days a week. Nobody is happier about that than myself and my school committee and my teaching staff. We want all our kids in school full-time. We are in full agreement to move forward with that plan slash directive of the Department of Education. The other point to that, of all kids being in school five days a week, is there is no longer an approved remote learning option for students who are not coming to school in the fall based on either their parents are not in agreement with the protocols we have in place, or many other reasons. We do not have the right to provide a remote option for students. It won't count as attendance, and therefore, we can't, we cannot do that. The next point was that masks are strongly recommended for students pre-K to six while indoors. They are making that recommendation to committees and to the superintendent to have, they're strongly recommending that we have kids wear masks while they're indoors. Given that there is not an option for vaccination for that age level, I believe that the group that I've consulted with, all of our key stakeholders in the school district, would agree that the students would need to wear the masks because they don't have the option. And that is a DESI recommendation and a Department of Public Health recommendation, Mass Department of Public Health, which is different than the school's public health department. Another point was that masks are strongly recommended for those who are not yet vaccinated. The department believes that we should have people who are not vaccinated, students and staff. They also speak about school visitors being masked if they are not vaccinated. In our school system, visitors that come into the system or students and staff that are here, we would need to know who was vaccinated and who was not vaccinated in order to make sure that students who are vaccinated and provide proof of that are wearing, not wearing masks, but if you do not have proof of that or a medical exemption, you would have to keep a mask on regardless of what grade you were in. And if you worked for the public school or volunteer in the public school, are those people that we allow to come into our buildings. So we do agree with that recommendation. However, if we do not require a mask and there is a positive COVID test, when I say require, require is different than recommend, if there's a positive COVID case in a classroom or a grade, we will be left with no ability to determine who was masked on that day, which would result in a large number of students and staff having to follow the protocols of quarantine, which can significantly impact the number of students and staff that may be out of school without any remote option for learning in our school district. It's not logistically possible for us to account on a daily basis every student that walks through the door that has a mask on, if it is voluntary for the unvaccinated staff. And if you can picture it, a class of 25 students, if it is a voluntary process, whether you're vaccinated or not to wear a mask, we would have to take note of that every single day when kids walk through the doors, as well as our staff. And if you think about the high school, kids have seven periods a day, and five of the, five periods a day in a seven-day rotating schedule. So they see seven teachers within a two-day period, and that teacher sees approximately five classrooms filled with students. So they would have to know every student that came into their class every day, whether or not they wore a mask or didn't wear a mask, in order to help with contact tracing and avoid multiple opportunities for, for absences. DESI and Mass DPH also recommend that schools allow vaccinated students in grades seven through 12 to remain unmasked if they are vaccinated. So students in grade seven through 12 have the opportunity to get the vaccination because they are of an age where you can. Students 12 and under 12 do not. We would agree with implementing that recommendation of the Department of Education, as long as we could account the vaccination status of those students, and I would say the same would go for teachers. If you can account for their vaccination status and you know that they have a valid vaccination, or in some cases, as we did last year, with our, some of our students with disabilities who are unable to wear a mask because of a medical condition or behavioral implication, sensory integration issues, we accounted for those students and made accommodations in terms of distancing and in terms of staffing who were teaching those students, providing them with extra PPE, making sure that they were protected themselves while they were teaching an unmasked and unvaccinated student. Another recommendation is that all staff, students, parents, and guardians would be required to wear a mask regardless of their vaccination status while on a bus or in the nurse's office. And, and I misspoke because it was not a recommendation. The Department of Education has made this a required activity. And the required activity is that if you go into the nurse's office at any moment during the school day, even if you had an exemption because you had a vaccination and you didn't have to wear a mask, upon entering that room, you would have to have a mask on. Reason behind it, I'm assuming, is that we have kids that are symptomatic, staff that are symptomatic, and nurses that are involved with symptomatic students and staff all day long. So that is a mandate that we don't have any wiggle room on, and the transportation mandate is the same. We don't transport a lot of students in the district, but we do have our own in-district vehicles that we do athletics on, so students going to athletic games outside the community, traveling, staff getting on those vehicles outside the community, and then some of our little ones and students up through grade six that live beyond 2.1 miles, which is about three streets in the community of Winthrop, that we do transport those students. It would be mandatory that while sitting on those buses, although distancing is not required, that students and staff on those vehicles have to wear masks, and that they are recommending that the bus windows for contact tracing purposes stay open, I believe it's four inches. And committing that to memory is concerning for me, but I believe that is, that is the case. Just a few more. There is no specific distancing on the buses I talked about or in schools anymore, although we believe that we need to maximize the amount of distancing that we can in every aspect of the school. So if we can achieve three-foot distancing in a classroom, we need to do it. If we can achieve three-foot distancing in a cafeteria or a phys ed room, we need to do it. There is no masking required outside of school. I would agree that we continue to accept that and move forward with that. We have gotten into a pattern of taking our students outside as much as possible. We will continue to encourage that moving forward regardless of the mask mandate decision, whatever the committee decides. We would encourage eating outside as much as possible, going outside for recess as much as possible, taking mask breaks and walking around the school as much as possible to continue to expose our students to fresh air and those who cannot remove masks, allowing them to do so. Let's see. Continue good hy, hand hygiene and stay home when you're sick. I mean, I think we've been practicing that before, pre-COVID. We've ramped it up quite a bit. Teachers and staff and administration and the school nurses and Meredith Hurley are all encouraging that we continue to do that, much more so than we did years ago. I was always a hand washer, now I'm like a multiple hand washer, but to continue to do that in our classrooms, continue it as part of the routine of our classrooms. Protocols for quarantine and contact tracing updates. My notes that I wrote yesterday said is forthcoming from the Department of Education. Actually, I did this on Thursday. Friday was, we've been told that the protocols are changing and that there's not going to be as much quarantining. It all surrounds mask wearing, so we just got them on Friday. I have not had a chance to sit with my nurse group again since last Wednesday. We will be meeting again this week. And the, it is better than what it was in the past. So if students do have on masks and they are, Tara, our school nurse is here, and our students are exposed to a positive person, if they were masked and if they were three feet from the exposed person in a classroom, they will not have to quarantine for 10 days. However, they will, parents will have to agree to allow us to binax test them, that's that quick nose swab, for five school days. And so if you're hearing, you know, the reason, the reasoning behind not masking, or us being unable to determine who's supposed to be masked on a given day, if we don't have any control over that, we will not know if there is a positive case in a classroom, who was masked or not, if in fact, we don't have any control over what the requirements to attend school here in Winthrop will be. Couple more quick ones. If you feel, one of their other recommendations, if you feel comfortable having your child wear a mask regardless of their vaccination status, this is a parental, should be a parental prerogative. So what does that mean? Any individual at high risk for disease from COVID or with household members who are at high risk, we would continue to encourage those families, vaccinated or unvaccinated, for their children to wear masks. But at all times, any child, any staff member, vaccinated or not vaccinated, can wear a mask within our schools. Nobody will be asked to remove it. Hey, you had your vaccination status, your parent said you, you don't have to wear a mask. If a child comes in with a mask, we will not tell them to take it off. So we, I would recommend that we intend to support that. So now, as I typically do, I'm going to bring you back home to what I believe are the options, just reviewing the options that a school district has based on the recommendation of the Department of Education. You could do three, in my opinion, and folks can, can add if they think there is a different option. You could do one of three things. You can have no mandates or policies relative to masking that are directly tied to the Department of Education's recommendations, even if you accept all their recommendations. You, we, you could say, we accept all the recommendations and we're going to ask you to please, as we strongly recommend, have your child wear a mask to school if they're unvaccinated. Same for the staff. That would mean there'd be no protocols in place for us to determine during an exposure who had a mask on on a given day, and the increase in the number of students that would potentially be removed from school for 10 days for quarantining would be much higher than they would if we knew and were able to calculate and identify kids who don't have to go home, if in fact, you had a policy in place to support mask wearing. Your second option would be a universal mask wearing. Universal mask wearing, it would be a policy that would be put in place by the school district that would say, regardless of your status, whether you're vaccinated or not vaccinated, whether you work here or just walking through the doors, we don't let anybody in the school district who doesn't wear a mask, and you have to wear it all day while you're in the school building. Not while you're outside at recess, not while you're coming, you know, coming to school, but regardless, you'd have to wear one. That's called a universal mask policy. And then there's a third option, which is called a differentiated mask policy. And that policy is one that is in line with the Department of Education's current recommendation in which unvaccinated people must wear masks, whether you're a teacher or whether you're a student. And if you have a vaccination status that you would like to reveal to the school district that says you're vaccinated, you will be able to remove your mask. However, the difference between that and no mandate or no policy is that the school district now has a running record with a differentiated mask policy because a parent or a staff member says, here is my vaccination status, I'm asking to be exempt from the mask wearing. Everybody wears a mask unless you have either a medical exemption or vaccination, fully vaccinated status exemption. We now have a running record of everybody that has that. It does a few things. It allows us to identify those who are supposed to have masks on during the day and those who are not. It allows us, if we have that running record, not to have to approach children who come in one day with a mask, one day without a mask. Hey, are you supposed to be wearing a mask, are you not? If the child has an exemption, we know these seven kids in this classroom do not have to wear a mask. If a child is not on that exemption list, we don't have to, I heard a lot about mask shaming and things, things of the such. We don't need to know why you have an exemption, whether it's medical or whether it's that you've been vaccinated, but what we do know is you're supposed to have one on. So we will have masks available to kids, say, just, you've got to be on this list and, you know, you can either talk to the nurse about it or, or talk to your parents about it, but once you get on this list, you don't have to wear a mask, and we don't have to ask kids questions. Are you vaccinated, are you not? We don't have to get into that conversation with kids and disrupt learning time, or embarrass kids, or cause kids to feel like they have to speak on their own behalf. Many of our kids are not ready for that. The population of children that cannot be vaccinated are our, under 12-year-old students. So clearly, if it was a differentiated mask policy, the students under 12 years old would not have the option not to wear a mask because they don't have the option for vaccination yet. However, some may have an option for a medical exemption not to wear a mask. So, based on all of that, the school committee, and based on the above impacts, and I'll let Meredith chime in as well, our recommendation would absolutely be the temporary, and I say temporary, mask, mandatory mask wearing for all Winthrop school students, staff, and employees under a differentiated mask policy, which gives people the option to reveal to us that they have a vaccination status. They can prove that to us. We have an app ready to go so that the vaccination status goes to, gets uploaded by a parent to an app. We don't actually look at it. A facility in Cambridge which follows HIPAA and multiple other vaccination status and personal item status coverage, they would be the ones that would approve that vaccination status as being valid, and they would notify us that this particular person in your school district has an exemption, and that is all we need to know. That protects people quite a bit. It gives parents choice in terms of whether or not you want to tell us or not. You don't have to, if the rule is everybody wears a mask, you have a choice to tell us whether or not you have an exemption to wear a mask or not. We're not, we're not mandating that you share that with us. We would be, under that particular differentiated mask policy, be mandating masks for all unless you have an exemption, whether it be medical or vaccination status. So, is Meredith on?
I am.
Meredith is on. So hi, Meredith.
Sorry, guys, can I ask a question of Lisa before we move on to Meredith as it relates to the DESI guidelines?
Yes.
Thank you. So I'm just, Lisa, I'm pulling up the DESI guidelines here, and in regards to the contact tracing and quarantine protocols, it reads that DESI and DPH will soon release a new version of the protocols for responding to COVID-19 scenarios document. As part of this guidance, districts in the statewide testing program or using other approved diagnostic tests will be able to implement a new test and stay protocol in lieu of requiring asymptomatic close contacts to quarantine. Under test and stay, asymptomatic close contacts will have the option to remain in school and be tested daily with binax now for at least five days. Vaccinated staff and students are exempt from quarantine. It doesn't mention masking here, so I'm just a little confused as to how it's written because it goes into COVID-19 testing and then contact tracing and quarantine protocols, and I'm wondering if these tests are available to us and the test and stay is available, how that would impact masking versus non-masking because it doesn't mention masking here.
Yeah, so I can tell you, because I'm, and I'm passing something out that just is sort of hot off the press. So that quarantine protocol came out on Friday, so I have not yet had the opportunity to do a deep dive into it with our school health nurse. Tara is our COVID lead within the school, and Meredith is the town health nurse. So we haven't had an opportunity to do the deep dive into whether or not we are, we, to go through the protocols and kind of line them up. What I can tell you, and Tara, you can jump all over me if I get it wrong, however, it is for students who are masked that are allowed to stay, students who are masked at the point of exposure are the students that would be allowed to do the test and stay. Correct, Tara?
Tara's not on the panel.
No, she's not. She's here, Tara is here in the room.
Okay. We can't see you guys.
Yeah, so, so the short of it is within the protocols is we need to dig a little bit deeper, but the first brush look at them Saturday and Sunday is that students who are masked that are in, within, have been masked and exposed.
I can, I can add one thing to help Lisa if you want.
All right, hold on one sec. But students who are masked and exposed within three feet of the contagious person or the COVID-positive person could participate in the test and stay, which would mean they would not have to quarantine at home. I think key to the point in students who are masked, for people to understand how classrooms work, at the elementary level, obviously, if it was mandatory for kids to be masked, we know that everybody is masked. Therefore, if there is an exposure, the likelihood, if all kids are masked, the likelihood of those kids not having to quarantine is very high. They, very doubtful that they, we would have to send them home. Where we get into difficulty is if we don't have anything in place that says you have to be masked, and we just say, please, we strongly recommend you mask, please come in with a mask, the capacity for the school district to be able to track that daily data of every student who walks through the door Monday through Friday, whether or not they have on a mask, it would be very difficult for us to pinpoint that and say, we can say with a surety that in Mrs. Smith's class, the 25 kids that are in that class, although it's not mandatory to wear a mask, we pretty much believe that five or six of these kids had a mask on, but we're not really sure if they did or they didn't, because a parent could send you to school if we're only recommending it on Monday with a mask. On Tuesday, they may feel differently. So, so we haven't determined two things. So, so we haven't determined two things. We haven't fully vetted out the, the contact tracing protocol, which we will be doing because that's a mandatory part of the school day. We have to do that. And then we have to apply for, decide on which type of testing we're going to have the state help us with, apply for that testing and just make sure that we can manage it within the schools. And that's going to take us a few more days. So, we are going to apply for it because it, it makes sense to add more. We already do the binax testing, but whatever capacity we come back to school in and whatever the mandate is, is going to help us decide whether or not we need to bring the state in to help with additional testing or do we have the capacity to continue to do it on our own. And, and how that impacts the contact tracing, you know, for sure, will be part of, a reflection of the decision that the committee makes in terms of who's going to wear a mask and who's not.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be interested, I'd be interested to understand if this test and stay policy could work for non-masks. Because like you said, you, i- if it's some masks, some not, you don't have the capacity to know who has a mask on, but you would have the capacity if we, if we had the ability to test everybody to do a test and stay model in that scenario.
So I don't believe that the test and stay model, and we'll look into it a little bit deeper, but I believe the test and stay model is reflective of kids that have masks on when they were exposed as part of the test and stay group. Am I on that, Tara's going to jump in? Tara, come up, just come up here because of the microphone.
Is Tara around there?
Tara's here, she's getting on the mic.
Um, those students that have masks on and are three feet apart would be exempt from quarantine. That is on page four of what you were, what the department sent out.
On Friday.
On Friday.
So Tara, they also have the whole, the test and stay protocol B1, and that says that the duration of the test and stay lasts for seven days from the date of exposure. Close contacts can remain in school and do not have to quarantine as long as they are asymptomatic. They wear a mask in school at all times other than when eating or drinking, which at those times, they must be beyond three feet distance from other individuals. And they have to agree to the rapid tests, the binax now, on each school day and receive a negative result. So when the seven days passes, then they can go back to if they're, excuse me, if the individual remains negative, they can stay in school. If they're a vaccinated student, they do not have to continue to wear their mask once they pass their.
So, so given, given that this recommendation, given that these recommendations landed in our lap on Friday, the, the protocol for quarantining, regardless, has to be implemented in the school.
Right.
So the nurses really need to sit down with us to make sure that we're following it to the T. But what I can tell you with assurity is if we don't know who had a mask on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, and there was an exposure, we will have to err on the side of caution.
Right.
We will have to. If we're saying to parents that we're following the protocols, we cannot guess as to who had on a mask and who didn't. And to rely on teachers and to take that much time away from teaching and learning to, to, on the daily, take a list of every child that's wearing a mask in their classroom, you're talking, you know, a good five to 10 minutes of, of, just, just so that people understand what it takes to determine.
Yeah, I, I get the masking part. I was really asking more about the test and stay model, not about identifying who has a mask on, but being able to keep kids in class basing, based on the test and stay model. But it sounds like we need to get a little bit more information on that before we can say one way or another.
Agreed, agreed. So, and if Meredith can just jump in and just give a, Meredith, if you don't mind giving just a bit of an overview of the current numbers in the district and, in the district, in the, in the community and how that might equate to either decisions that you've made right now for the general municipality and then thoughts about the recommendations of the group from school to the school committee.
Sure, um, I, first of all, I apologize. My technology has not been awesome tonight, so my last loss.
Technology struggle today, so, wine.
My technology, I've been sending files back and forth anyways. So I'm not your, I, I'm not sure, anyways, it'll be fine. But I'm gonna, um, just, um, could I share my screen? I don't know.
You can, but the people, the people in the room in the committee are not, um, they're not looking at Zoom, so, um,
Oh, my God, yeah, okay.
Yeah, so you may want to just.
So I'll just redo it. That's actually almost easier. So, um, I'm going to preface this by saying that, um, by, you know, reviewing kind of the case counts, um, so to give an overview of, you know, we all know where we've been and where we're going and things like that. So our highest case count by month was December and January. We were at 543 in, um, in December, and then January, we were at 475. So we've significantly decreased since then. Um, back down to, um, we started to see a decrease shortly after, into February, we dropped to 185 cases. Um, our lowest was in June, we only had 12 cases in June. In July, we had 30 cases, and already in August, we've had 40. So we are definitely seeing an increase, but, you know, not a shocking increase by what, you know, is going on around the country, around the Commonwealth. Um, our percent positive has increased. We're about 2.4% right now, based on our testing data. Um, we were, as everybody knows, very, very high in our, in our percent positive um, back in December and January. It was kind of triggered these larger scale, um, mandates about stay-at-home orders and things like that. So not saying that that is, um, that we're anywhere close to that, but we have seen this increase. So that's where, where I, I feel like I want to watch and see what this does. You know, we're hearing in other parts of the country, and I don't think that that necessarily is going to happen here. Um, our vaccine rates are very good. Um, on the flip side to that, we also have seen more breakthrough. My first breakthrough case, um, and for those of you that might not know what breakthrough is, breakthrough is a positive COVID case in somebody that has been vaccinated. We haven't seen any reinfection rates, which would be an, a subsequent positive case of somebody that has tested positive for COVID previously. Um, so our first case of vaccine breakthrough happened March 29th. And, um, we've seen more and more cases of vaccine breakthrough, primarily in those over the age of 50. Um, although I have seen some healthcare workers more recently that were in the first, you know, in their twenties and thirties that were vaccinated in the first batch, um, of, um, prioritization. So it's not outside of the realm of, and we also know that with certain variants, particularly the Delta variant, there is the ability to then spread it to their household. So, um, so that is another piece of this puzzle that we're, that we're just surveilling. We're just watching to see how this plays out. So, you know, looking at the first half of the month of August in that we've already had 40 cases, um, and, you know, we, we saw our market drop, um, that has kind of maybe more inclined to be conservative in terms of recommendations with masking, um, and understanding kind of that, that collateral. Um, I think that the, the test and stay option is excellent for schools, um, but also understanding that included in this picture is more than necessarily just infection rates. Um, it's also quarantine rates. It's also, um, you know, the two options, our two biggest, biggest tools for protection of COVID spread are either vaccine or masking. And, um, you know, knowing that a potential classroom could be kind of taken offline or have to quarantine, um, you know, I just, I think that it bears some watching initially.
And Meredith, in terms of the, I have the most recent updated vaccine numbers, and where I have the larger microphone and bigger mouth, I'm just going to let some of the folks in, that are here, as well as the folks at home know, and feel free to jump on me if I get it wrong. But the town has the ability to look at the vaccination rates of, of a group of people. So the 12 to 15-year-olds in the community of Winthrop, which includes all the 12 to 15-year-olds in the community of Winthrop, not necessarily all the kids that go to Winthrop Public Schools. So we have kids that go to other schools, private schools, Catholic schools, charter schools. So there are 777, uh, sorry, 774 12 to 15-year-olds reported in the community, which is about 4% of our community. We have 444 of those kids, approximately 57%, actually 57%, that have received one dose of the vaccination. And then 376 of the whole has been fully vaccinated, which is 49%. Am I saying that right, Meredith?
Yep.
Okay. So approximately, you know, actually 49% fully vaccinated out of 774, which is a good number for our 12 to 15-year-olds. Now, all of those kids don't necessarily go to Winthrop Public Schools, so of the 49% of the, of the total, I don't know if 25% of those kids go to Winthrop Public and the rest don't. However, I'm going to talk about the 16 to 19-year-olds, which is our middle school, high school population. 809 is the population in the community, and the total amount of fully vaccinated out of the 809 is 470, which is 58%, which is a pretty good place to be. So, so we are having folks that are vaccinating and, and hopefully, you know, will be willing to produce those vaccination cards, depending upon how the, the committee works. But we're working and of course, and, you know, encouraging those who want to be vaccinated to continue to pursue that because it does take some time. Meredith, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add. We are going to have public comment, which is we've received in, in, as well, and I've received 13 emails from parents supporting masking. I received one email from a parent supporting it being an option and a choice for a parent, but not a mandate or a policy. We have invited parents and reached out to parents to do, to call in to let their feelings be known in terms of what they, they would like, so we can open it up for that. But I didn't know if you had anything else, Meredith, you wanted to add. After we do public comment, it's going to go back to the committee for deliberation, at which time additional questions could be asked of myself or Meredith.
All right, no, I have no addition, nothing additional to add, I don't want to.
Okay. Thank you, Meredith.
Sorry, is it possible to ask a question before we go to public comment, Mr. Chairman?
I, I think we go to public comment and then we do our deliberation with the questions. I think that's the better way to do it.
Okay, I just think that the question may have pertinent information that may impact public comment.
I, I still think it's more deliberation than public, uh, because we're, we're basically deliberating going back and forth. But go ahead, ask your question.
Okay, Meredith, can you tell us how many pediatric cases of COVID we have in the community right now?
Currently active?
Correct.
Did she answer? She's, she asked how many pediatric cases of COVID are in the community right now?
Right now, we have four. Okay, great, and those are in the age groups of zero to 10 and 11 to 20, two in each? Okay, great. And, um, the, the other question I have is around protecting children who can't be vaccinated. I've read that, um, you know, the best defense for our children is to build a wall of vaccinated individuals around them. And as we look at the data of vaccinated, of folks, if, if you remove the 12 to 19-year-olds from the data and you look at those with at least one dose, which means they're on their way to being fully vaccinated, we're looking at a, a population with 80% vaccination rate when we do that. And I just, you know, if we're looking at the individuals with at least one dose per capita and we remove the 12 to 19-year-olds, our population is 80% vaccinated with one dose. So more of a statement than a, than a question, but I just, I, I guess my question to you, Meredith, is, is that a significant or, or a solid number for vaccination rates for the town?
Explain to me again the 80%? I'm sorry, perhaps I was.
No, that's, no, that's okay, sorry. So I'm looking at the column in the, in the chart that says individuals with at least one dose, right? And I'm taking out the 12 to 19-year-olds, so I'm taking out the 57 and 70% of those who have had at least one dose, and I'm looking at the 20 to 75-plus-year-olds and their percent vaccination. So when you average those, you come to roughly 80% of the total population besides children who have been vaccinated. With one, with one dose.
Yeah, but then you're kind of extending that to say that that creates, like, it's, the whole aspect of what, what I think you're talking about is potentially, like, approaching herd immunity, is that, you know, um, we have to include everybody in, as much as possible, in that herd number.
Yeah.
So I think that, you know, we're, in comparison to other communities, we're doing well, getting folks vaccinated. Um, but we also have to include in those numbers because they are eligible. You know, including, including that. Obviously, the 12-year-olds, the 12 to 15-year-olds, the 12 to 18-year-olds were the, the most recent eligible. So it makes sense that they're, um, a little bit lower. But at the same token, you know, you look at the, the 50 to 64-year-olds where we've seen the most infection rates, and they're lower than the 20 to 29-year-olds and the 30 to 49-year-olds. So which is, that there's some hesitancy in that, in that age, in that age group, unfortunately, that we're working hard to, to get them, um, up to where, you know, every other age group is approaching the 80s, like you said.
Got it, thank you.
No problem.
So, in moving.
Meredith, do you have anything further, Meredith? Meredith, do you have anything further for the committee?
Oh, no, sorry. Thank you, Chairman.
That's okay. Uh, now we'll be turning over to, uh, public comment. We're going to limit it to three minutes. We can extend it if, if it gets more. The only reason we're doing that is because I just don't know how many people are going to be making public comment from, uh, from the Zoom meeting. So I'm going to open up to live first, people that are here right now. Sorry.
Can you just state the name and, and the school that your child attends, if you're willing to do so?
Yes, Kathleen Capucchio. I have, um, C, Chris is going to be a senior, and Nicholas is going to be a freshman, and Ariana is going to be an eighth grade. I will just speak to what directly affects them, not to other children because I just don't think it's really in my lane. So just with regard to my children, um, we did choose to get them vaccinated. They're actually, they, they, they need to get their second shot, um, I think in a week. But we did choose to get them vaccinated, and I would really like them to be able to go to school because we did get them vaccinated. Again, I am not a vax shamer. People choose to not do so, that's their prerogative, of course. You know, it's parental choice, which I think we're losing a lot of these days as parental choice, just in, in general. But I personally would just love to see my children that are vaccinated in the middle of high school to not have to wear a mask. I feel that they, as children, have done everything right in everything that's been suggested of them from health, you know, from health departments and whatnot. So I, my opinion is I would hope that the committee allows for at, at least the middle and high school where, again, my children are to not be able, not to have to wear a mask if they're vaccinated, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Mr. Machucho, you keep time as we go? Yes, I'm sorry.
Rob Demaco, Precinct 6. First off, before I speak, Mrs. Howard, you spoke about people six feet apart in terms of 0% spread. Was, was there any numbers in terms of when it went down to three feet apart from April to June?
Same.
Same, zero, okay.
In school, in school spread. Sorry, we're not supposed to be answering questions, but that was a point of clarity.
Yeah, no, 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 I apologize. Uh, I'll be brief, I won't take up three minutes. I, I just, um, I would just like to see the, the board follow the DUCI guidelines and make it strongly recommended, not a requirement, to wear a mask. The other thing, and this has nothing to do with me, but it, it takes me back to being a child. When I was in kindergarten, my kindergarten teacher was Mrs. Wesley. And she, I remember her reading in front of a class and reading a book about the Nina de Pinta and the Santa Maria and watching her mouth the words. And I think that's really important in childhood education to see your teacher actually speaking. So that's all I have. I, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Demaco. Yes?
Hi, I'm Stacy McKenzie. My comment has nothing to do with masks. I don't know if you want me to hold.
I don't know if you want me to hold off?
No, public comments, public comments.
All right. So I'm, I'm coming for you, and I don't know where we're at about crossing guards. Just something to maybe think about, um, for the fall, when kids start going back to school. You know, obviously, the kids that go to the Fort Banks School are accompanied by an adult, uh, where they take the bus. Um, so my really concern is, um, this, the corner of Walden and Pauline, where that horrific, um, tragedy happened over the weekend. That is a pretty, um, thickly settled area, especially two thirty-five, you know, two twenty, when kids are getting out of school, this car is parked on both, both sides. Um, and when the children are leaving the building, they have to look left as cars are coming across, right as cut, and they do have to kind of step out, and a sharp left, which my kids didn't know what that meant. So I was trying to show them what that meant, a sharp left as people come around. So just considering, considering, um, hiring some crossing guides, that's just one area that comes to mind. And also Pauline and Pleasant, um, there are lights there, so I could see maybe that not being a high area of concern, but really where that horrific, um, accident did happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any further public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, uh, my name's Celeste Hanon, and my children are in the, well, one is in Fort Banks, the other's gonna be an incoming kindergartner. And again, I appreciate all of the research and studying the guidelines, but I'd also just like to encourage the board to follow the recommendation and just strongly recommend the mask instead of mandating it. Um, I know that there is probably, a big part of it is just putting the kids out of school for ten days, while they have to quarantine if they don't have it, and I understand, but with such low transmission rates within the children in the K to sixth grades, you know, these kids have been with each other all summer in summer programs, no masks on at the beach, and we're still so low, that I just think that risk for having them stay home is so low that the benefits of not having to have the masks on, being able to have the social communication skills with their teachers and peers far outweighs that small risk. Um, and I just know, you know, for my own kids, having not had to wear masks all summer now, I just think it's gonna be a very stressful situation for them, especially at the young ages. And again, they're in the lowest-risk group, and as a parent, I just think it should be my responsibility to make that choice for my children. Um, and as someone else said, you know, our, our rights as parents keep getting kind of dwindling here. Um, so, you know, I know a lot of parents feel like more comfortable with the masks, and I, you know, everyone has their own feelings about it, but for myself and looking at the town, I just would really prefer that we kept it a recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone further in person?
Yeah, sure. Excuse me, I'll make this as quick as I can. I'm a fast reader, my name is Jamie Resti. I have a daughter enrolled at the Cummings. I'm speaking out today as I believe not make mandating masks not only wrong, but a reckless thing to do at this time, especially so for children eleven and under who are actually vaccinated. Setting aside the DESI and DPH recommendations, I'm unclear what exactly has changed since the spring when masks were required for all. If anything, with the Delta variant now, it is worse at this point and is much more contagious, and even amongst the vaccinated can, 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 can transfer. So some of this talk about masks protecting people from transmitting it, or rather vaccinations, stopping people from transmitting, I think is, is, is a mistake. Um, further, in fact, yesterday, there were two thousand one hundred and sixty-nine confirmed cases in Massachusetts from children aged five to nineteen in the last two weeks. That's more than the children that go to, that are in this entire school district. Then, um, again, that's just the past two weeks, well after the DESI DPH made what they're, what I believe to be their obsolete recommendations. I honestly feel that it's simply mass fatigue and COVID fatigue that is the reason that we're trying to go in this other negative, bad direction. My plea is that this policy change is reconsidered immediately. Many other school districts across the nation and locally have followed the CDC's recommendations, sensible policy of masking for all students, teachers, visitors, et cetera. Um, I find it interesting that all of our neighbors have, are requiring masks in schools. Boston, Revere, Chelsea, Swabs Scott, Salem, Gloucester, Brookline, and out west, Springfield, Amherst and Holyoke. Why can't we do that here? What makes Winter so special? Why must parents choose between sending children to school unprotected where there is a deadly virus lurking or pulling them out and homeschooling them? I feel so sick to my stomach as I'm looking forward to my ten-year-old daughter, again, who attends the Cummings, finally going to have in-person learning, and now these are the choices that we're having to make. This new policy, which seems to defy both logic and science, is making it very, very difficult for me to do so. I fail to understand the harm it would cause for unvaccinated children to be masked in the middle of a global viral pandemic. I'd like to believe the Winter's public school system is better than this. I really feel let down and sad that Winter Public Schools are essentially asking us to go back to normal and pretend that children are unaffected by a deadly virus. Even if that were true, which of course it is not, let us not forget that children can and do transmit the virus to others in their households, making the repercussions of this policy difficult for parents who are first responders, infirm or at risk medically, cancer patients, et cetera, or even those who, who work with these populations. I never thought I'd be speaking to any of you right now about this. I trusted that Winter would follow safety and science and not some Ron DeSantis head-in-the-sands-style governance, ignorance, rather. I no longer feel proud to live here, and I'm personally ashamed and embarrassed at the school district's potential reckless disregard for our children and their family's health and safety. I'm also tired of hearing about the DESE. Is the DESI more informed than the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Center for Disease Control? Not a single member of the DESE is a scientist. All of, I will, all of their members in ed, are not, are educators and simply not qualified to judge what is needed for safety in a global pandemic. What does DESI know more than the American Academy of Pediatrics? And what do they know more than the CDC? Both the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics essentially recommend universal masking because a significant portion of the student population is not yet eligible for vaccines. Let me repeat that, we're talking about children that are not eligible for-
You've exceeded the three minutes, we have a lot of people, you've, you've-
I understand, I'd really like to finish.
I, I, I'm so, I, I know you've put a lot of work into it, but we have a lot of other people that wanna speak as well.
I'm sure you do, and we'll all have a chance.
Right, but I, I'm, I'm the chairman, and I'm telling you that you need to wrap it up. I, I, I understand your position.
Well, lastly, I don't see anything that the DESI and the DPH recommends that is inconsistent with mandating masking, with mandating masks. In fact, they're practically giving you permission to mandate them. They strongly recommend mask-wearing. I'm sure if you, your spouse, or your significant other, or manager at work strongly recommends something that you take, that strongly recommends that you take out the trash or complete an assignment, you do it. Let's do that for our children today. You could all literally have blood on your hands. If a child or teacher or school employee falls ill or catches COVID and/or makes someone else sick, who dodges because they are peers.
Sir, you're gonna have to remove it.
This is a complex deadly problem. Easy, there's an easy solution here. It's clear that the DESI and the DPH guidance are-
The time has been exceeded.
All have a chance to demonstrate true leadership. I trust and hope that that's a better use.
Uh, we need to move on. He's had his three minutes, it's been ninety-five now.
Well, I'm sorry, this is what we're talking about here.
Not fair to everybody else, Mr. Chairman. There's other people in the room who wanna talk, and people online. So he needs to stop talking right now. This is not fair. It's not fair to other people.
That's our policy, sir, I'm sorry. You've had your opportunity, we understand your position, but it's not fair to the real-
I hope you do, I really hope you do.
Well, that's why we're here this evening. Okay, who's, uh, next in person?
I am, um, it's a tough follow. Um, uh, I'm Sheila Curdio, I have, um, two children. One is going into the, one is in Cummings and one is going to Fort Banks. My children are under twelve and they don't have a choice to get vaccinated. With my excitement, my friend who's very excited right here, um, I don't have as much poise as him, but I strongly, strongly, strongly beg you to please make masks a mandate. My children are accustomed to them, all the children are accustomed to them. We just had a mass shooting here a month ago. We just had a tragic accident up the street, and you see what happens to a lovely community with just a small, one death. We could lose just one child. You, if you've all had toddlers, you know how they eat, you know how they touch. They pick their nose, they pull their mask down and pick their nose. They are the innocents, and it is our duty to protect them, and that is my feelings on it. All I do is I imagine, and there are mothers out there, that when their child has to get intubated, they have to reduce their sedation, so the child is aware, and they are looking into their parents' eyes to be helped when they are going to die from COVID. If we can prevent one death, just one, and say, let's all wear masks, then that's what I'd like to do, and that's what I would vote for. And I appreciate your time. Um, I would just like to, you know, again, to piggyback on him, can we please look at the INH? Can we please look at the CDC? Can we, the DESE and the MDH, they, they are not qualified. Let's look at CDHC and INH and see what they do. They have mandated mask requirements. The ATF, the American Teachers, just published in the transcript recently how disappointed they were and strongly recommends. Let's just get through this pandemic with no deaths in Winter, and especially not our kids.
Thank you.
I had much more to say, it's just so, but I, I, I just, I'm begging you, I don't, I can't, we can't lose our kids. And lastly, what if a child knows that he's COVID-positive and he infects his friend? Is there emotional support in place to help those children to, that they've killed their teacher or the child inadvertently, 'cause I can't with this? You got me fired up, so.
Yeah, it's such a burden to mask.
I know, but anyways, that, I feel very strongly, and I did a quick survey, sort of, you know, through parents. Most of them are choosing to wear masks. Out of thirty-two parents, they represent twenty-one kids, twenty-one kids will wear masks and two will not wear masks. And I know for a fact, one of them will be attending my child's school, my beautiful six-year-old boy, who I want to live.
Thank you. So any other public comment, uh, live this evening?
We have to check with Lori. So Lori Galvin is gonna manage the public comment so that there's no echoing. So she will ask the folks, uh, to come in, state their name, and school that their child attends. And start doing that now?
No, she's on mute.
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, ready to go.
Okay, the first person we have up is S. Lemieux. I'm gonna bring her over, or I am, I'm not sure. S. Lemieux, can you hear us?
What's her name? S. Lemieux.
Well, I'm gonna go to the next person, and if you can hear us and can't get on, please try again. Wait a minute. Okay, next we have, um, Karen Chavez. Chavez, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Excellent, you're on.
Um, I guess, first of all, I guess my disappointment is probably with the DESE, that they have not mandated vaccinations, um, for the kids that are over twelve. Uh, you certainly have to be vaccinated for other things, measles, chickenpox, diptheria, tetanus, et cetera. So this probably should be under strong consideration and maybe pushed by the school systems. I think the Winter Public Schools should follow the DSE for mask use. All proven vaccinated employees and students should be exempt from wearing a mask unless they want to. Anyone else who is not vaccinated, for whatever reason, should wear a mask or will wear a mask, whether it's medical or religious. And as Mrs. Howard said earlier, there are certain kids in the school, um, in this bed program that it's up to the sped department to decide, should they wear a mask or not if they are not vaccinated because of behavior issues or other medical issues. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay, next up we have Julia Agri. Julia, are you there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, hi guys, uh, I'm Julia Agri, I'm in Precinct Two. I'm actually a pediatric neonatal ICU nurse in a Level One center in the city. I also float to every pediatric med surg floor in my hospital as well. And we've had kids admitted with COVID. Um, and it's summertime, and our hospital has been full. And at times, we've been at critical bed capacity the past few weeks in both pediatric ICU and regular pediatrics. Um, we've had to turn away multiple pediatric transports, depending on the hour of the day, because there's no bed available. Um, you know, we only have a certain amount of pediatric bed spaces in Boston, and I know a lot of people aren't aware, but when we were during our surge, um, during the state of emergency and we didn't have school and we were in remote learning, we didn't have a lot of hospital admissions in pediatrics because most of our efforts were reserved for the adult population. We had pediatric ICU nurses taking care of adult COVID patients. Um, now it's a little bit different because all schools are gonna be open, all schools are gonna make their own recommendations, and right now in the hospital, we have been very busy. We have COVID, we have RSV, we have pediatric mental health admissions that have been quite a lot right now. Um, and children sit in those beds until they have a mental health placement. There are not enough mental health placements to take on the volume of children that are coming in. So these children have to take up those beds in order to get a new placement. We can't send them home. Um, so we've been pretty full, and I think that's probably across the board in pediatrics as far as all the pediatric hospitals. Um, I have to say that, you know, we are seeing a little bit more increased volume. Uh, usually when we see this, it's in fall, and you know, it's getting closer to October, but it's in the middle of summer, and we can expect we're gonna see more cases come into the hospital, whether they have a cough, cold, COVID, mental health, they're all gonna be coming. Um, so I, I'm hoping that people are gonna be more conservative and not throw caution to the wind, um, because I feel as though, you know, you don't address this adequately now. In a couple weeks' time, you're gonna be addressing it again. Um, I think universal masking probably makes the most sense to keep kids in school five days a week, to have the greatest level of flexibility, to have the least amount of students needing to be quarantined, um, to really give kids the support of school every day, um, instead of this back and forth, back and forth with them. Um, the other thing that you have to consider, as far as the fifteen minutes less than, um, three feet of distancing, is the lunchroom. Your lunchtime is twenty minutes. Um, if you're not gonna have distancing in the lunchroom, that's another area that you can be exposed. So that's another thing that the school is gonna have to decide on how they're gonna manage that as far as exposure. Um, you know, I think that Meredith was probably giving you some accurate information as far as, you know, watching these numbers, because I am concerned that we're gonna start seeing more cases as school starts, not gonna start off right away, but within a couple weeks' time, we'll start seeing numbers go up. Um, you know, it's much easier to start children now before school starts, where they were already used to it, than changing it up on them in three weeks. If we really are advocating for kids and we're really advocating for their benefit, you know, doing one thing and staying with it is probably best because you're not gonna get away with a mask, no mask mandate during the winter. I am sure that we're gonna have to have a mask mandate during the winter because I don't think that we're gonna be able to get through it without it. Um, just looking at the numbers now, in the past-
I, I, I hate to interrupt you, I, I hate to interrupt you, but we're allowing the three minutes so that we can get through everyone this evening and still deliberate. So if you wanna just kinda wrap it up?
Yeah, absolutely, it's just, it took us a long time in our town to get our numbers low enough that we could get kids back to school, and people took a long time to adopt this mask policy. I think stepping back now is probably the wrong step, and I think we should really continue our efforts to keep every single kid in school. Um, it's just, you know, it's what I see on the inside, and it certainly reflects the numbers. As far as August sixteenth last year, there was a hundred and eighty COVID patients admitted. Yesterday, or as of today, August fifteenth, there's four hundred and two COVID admissions. Um, so that tells me that we're higher than we were last year. So using all that data from last year, we had way different circumstances than we do now. And I think being more conservative now is probably gonna benefit us in the long run.
All right, th- thank you for your, thank you for your public comment.
Next up, we have, I don't know how to say it, wait a minute. Oh, Duncan Doer, Doer. Sorry, I'm, Mr. Benosan, can you hear us, Mr. Doer?
Yes, I can, thank you for the opportunity to speak here. So this should not be a very hard decision, this is a safety of life issue. So all the people in the school building should be masked regardless of all the vaccine sta- status. We have seen the Delta variant is more transmissible, and children are being affected in greater numbers than last year. We just heard that from the nurse before and from Meredith. Delta is also transmis- uh, transmissible through the vaccidase, vaccination individuals as well. So that's why everyone in our schools should wear a mask. It keeps the transmission down and it helps save lives, that's what's important here. Do the right thing, require masks in our schools, please. That is all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next up we have Todd Sacco. Todd, can you hear us? Mr. Sacco, can you hear us? Okay, I'm gonna mute him for now and see if he comes back. I'm gonna move on to Beth Zarega. Ms. Zarega, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, hi. Thank you, I would just like to share that, um, a few weeks ago, my fully vaccinated father-in-law caught COVID, was symptomatic, passed it to my fully vaccinated mother-in-law, who happily was asymptomatic. My father-in-law is dealing with continued, continued symptoms, um, in his lungs. The doctors do not know what's going on. They, um, quote, "have never seen it before." Um, and amongst the people I work with, um, a fully vaccinated person caught COVID at work, passed it to their seven-month-old baby. Um, another person, her elderly in-laws, both fully vaccinated, both caught COVID. The Delta variant is no joke. The D E S E guidelines were made before we had full information on the strike of the Delta variant. I highly recommend that this, that the Winthrop schools follow the C D C recommendation that came out just a few days after the D E S E on, uh, on July thirtieth. It came out, I believe, on August fourth. In this current scenario, August fourth is a different world from July thirtieth. Um, we know more now than we did then and know of the power of the Delta variant and the fact that it is causing breakthrough infections. They are passing to other people. And I truly hope that in order to keep our school communities and our town safe, that the school, that the school board decides on universal masking. Uh, my children have been wearing masks since they returned to school. They are four and seven, they are fine with it. Children are resilient. Um, I will be wearing a mask although I am fully vaccinated at work. I work in higher education, it is required of me. I also have to be tested weekly and I must be fully vaccinated. I can only hope that Winthrop will go to such lengths to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, next up is Len Delory. Len, can you hear us?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, thank you for the opportunity. Um, I'm fully on board with mask mandate, it shouldn't be a choice. Um, the school district and the Board of Health, they, they love to talk about how low the rates of COVID transmission were last year. Well, there's a reason for that, right? And a big part of that, of course, was mask-wearing and distancing. So I think we need to have both of those. Um, other people have commented about our neighbors who have mandated masks. Boston, Chelsea, Revere. Um, I don't think Winthrop has any sort of magic information that those much larger and much more resourceful, uh, school systems have. They've made that decision. Um, I think we need to do the same thing. It's not that hard. Um, when the kids were in school last, they wore masks. If you say to your kids, um, you're going back to school, you gotta wear a mask. They're gonna say, okay. And I, I think it's a no-brainer. Why not wear them? Why not follow the C D C guidelines? Why not follow the strongly recommended guidelines from our, from our own boards? Um, that's all I have to say, thank you for the time. I think we need to do this and things could change. Maybe we get a handle on the Delta variant, things change down the road, we ease the mandate. Maybe we don't, maybe there's another variant that's even worse. If we have mask mandate in place, it will be a lot easier to deal with. We don't know what we're dealing with. We do know masks help tremendously. Please consider it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, oh, there's Mr. Sacco, I think he's got it working, hold on. Mr. Sacco, can you hear us? I wonder if he's having a problem with his volume.
Hello?
There he is.
Yeah, hello. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Todd Sacco, Precinct Two, former school committee member, uh, wanted to thank you for the three minutes. Appreciate everybody's comments. Um, I think the one thing that's missing here, besides a lot of fear-mongering, by the way, is the fact that there, I've asked this of Meredith, I've asked this, you know, I'm someone who does a lot of research. I've asked this of medical professionals I know. I have a brother who's a neurosurgeon who was on a special task force. This man was the chief of spine at the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center. His name is Adam Kanter, K-A-N-T-E-R, if you want to look him up. Um, no joke, this person. And, um, yes, the variant is more contagious, but it is much weaker in its impact on people. That's first. Second, yes, hospitals are more crowded. Even children's hospitals are more crowded. However, it's not because of COVID cases, it's because they are doing their elective work now to try to make up for all that lost revenue they saw from the last year and a half. We need to stop trying to scare people into wearing masks when we know, at this point, they are unnecessary. Nobody, not Meredith, not anybody that I've spoken to in the medical field, can point to any community like Winthrop's that's at seventy-one plus percent vaccination where they're having a problem with Delta variants. Yes, we have cases rising. I have news for everybody on this call. Your child, as well as my child, as well as people who work in the school district's children, were running around together, unmasked, in their houses together, playing wrestling, doing whatever they wanted to for the last year and a half and up until this point. When they get sick, they're not getting sick. Look it up. There is no hospitalizations from young people in any meaningful numbers. They're not rising. I understand the want, the desire to say every life matters, but we're talking about population health here, not individual health. And I, I know, it's easy for me to say because right now it's not my kid that's sick. I get it, I'm not a cold person. I'm thinking about all the children and masking them has a detrimental effect. They're, especially the young kids who are trying to learn to read and write and see, see visual social cues and, you know, when, when kids are learning to speak, when they're having trouble, they sit with someone who teaches them how to speak and they learn to look at themselves in the mirror and watch their mouth movements. This is all real stuff. Their, their, uh, immune systems need to develop. When you mask them, you are limiting the amount of germs that they're exposed to. This is not good and we're not even getting into the depression. Folks, don't believe the hype. Meredith, I love you, I know you can hear me. We had this conversation this morning. You are very clinical. Clinical people have a hard time letting go, but she'll tell you, a point zero zero one two percent death rate is less than the flu. We are making mountains out of molehills here. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sacco.
Next up is Wendy Millar Page. Wendy, can you hear us?
Absolutely, good evening, School Committee, um, and all the other illustrious folks there. I do not, I'm Wendy Millar, Precinct Two, sorry. Um, I do not currently have any students enrolled in Winthrop Public Schools. I have graduated three of them. However, I am a volunteer within our Winthrop Public School System and my daughter works for one of our after-school programs and has spent every day this summer from seven A M. to a minimum of three thirty daily with children, um, in the higher-risk group of the unvaccinated kids. They have worn a mask all day unless they are eating or playing outdoors. I personally, as many of you know, had what's considered a long-term COVID case. I recently went to, um, the hospital and had to have an MRI. I have permanent damage to my brain and my lungs because of COVID. We don't know yet how that could affect our children long-term. I want people, I would rather us err on the side of caution. I hear some of Mr. Sacco's things and I agree. How do children learn facial cues, et cetera? Many of our teachers, at their own personal expense, have bought the right kind of mask so that people can see facial expressions, they can see the movement of the teacher's mouth. Is it the best-case scenario? Absolutely not. However, in this current time, during a global pandemic, I feel very strongly that anyone who walks through any of our doors, that our public schools should be required to wear a mask. And as a volunteer, I will gladly put a mask on day in, day out so that I can participate and be a part of the public school system. And I would hope that anyone else, um, who volunteers, teaches, all of our E S Ps, our lunch staff who's been there all summer, those folks, they're dedicated and they don't want children to be sick once or for us to lose any of them. And I appreciate you letting me have the time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up we have Elizabeth Alessi. Ms. Alessi, can you hear?
Yep, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, thank, thank you for, for giving me the time. Um, I live in Precinct One, my son is going to be a kindergartner this year at the Fort Banks. Um, I am speaking tonight to strongly encourage that masks are mandated. Um, as many others have said, my child is, uh, under twelve and so unable to be vaccinated. On top of that, I will have a newborn come September, who obviously will be unvaccinated. Um, I am disappointed that we're even having this debate two weeks before the school year begins. I work in regulatory affairs for a pharmaceutical company in Boston. I've worked in this industry for a long time. And my industry continues to insist on mask-wearing at work. We get tested weekly, I have to be vaccinated. We have taken many, many precautions throughout. I find it fascinating that in that industry where I actually am, uh, have many former colleagues who have been working on COVID vaccinations, you know, that we are taking, continuing to take it so seriously when so many of us have been vaccinated, uh, as early as we possibly could be and continue to take precautions and yet, um, we are debating whether we should be masking our children. Um, that's really all I have to say. And I don't know that any, that the folks on the call that are against making this mandatory care, that I know the science well, um, and worked in the industry. But, uh, you know, again, our kids, our young kids in particular, don't have a choice. Um, and so I would hope that we do the right thing for them. It's much better that we get a handle on this in the short term than this continues and continues and continues. And you know, we wouldn't be in this situation if we had all gotten on board with what needed to be done early on. And we didn't, as the adults. Um, so here we are again. So here we are again at the start of a school year and I hope that Winthrop Public Schools will do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Next up we have Suzanne Leonard. Suzanne, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you everyone for letting me speak this evening. Uh, my name is Suzanne Leonard. I have a six-year-old daughter who will be getting first grade at the Gorman Fort Banks School. Um, I'm going to be speaking in favor of the mask mandate. Um, but I do want to start by acknowledging the pain, um, the pain that I hear in so many of your voices, the pain that our community has faced, the pain that our nation has faced, our world has faced over the past eighteen months. It's been a long eighteen months. And I have to say, um, I've started calling into school meetings a lot more, um, since this, uh, since this started. And I just want to remind you of a pretty impassioned call, uh, that I was on probably about eight months ago where people were begging, begging to go back to school. Students were begging to go back to school. And I want, and I wanted my child to go back to school too. And I want to say that I think the fact that that was done without, um, major re-quarantines was because of masks. We were able to keep our children safe. We were able to send them to school and keep our children safe. And we did this because we required masks. So I think one thing for all of our differences, all of us on this call and how we feel about a mask mandate or not a mask mandate, I think we all want our children to be in school in person. And I feel very strongly that the way to ensure that they get to go to school and stay in school and stay safe in school is to have a mask mandate. And so I think again, for all of our differences, I hope that's something we can all agree on. Thank you, thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comment.
Next up is Ellen Galores. Apologize if I'm crossing that wrong, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the time, thank you to the school committee. I am completely against mask mandates. Uh, three kids in the high school, one just graduated. And whether you believe in a mask or not, I believe it is your right. I come from a long line of military family members. With the twentieth anniversary of nine eleven approaching, our freedoms are more important now than ever. You cannot mandate people to do something that they do not want to. If you want to wear a mask, if you want to send your kid to school with a mask, it is your right. Do not force it on other people. Thank you, I appreciate it, I'm completely against it. It's very unhealthy for the kids to suck in that bad air all day long and they get headaches. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you for your comment.
Next up is, excuse me, Elizabeth Pufal, Pufal?
Elizabeth? Yes, I'm here. So my name's Elizabeth Pufal Jones. I'm in Precinct Six. I have a six-year-old child who is going into the first grade at Fort Banks. And I also have a nine-year-old who is going into the fourth grade at the A T C. Um, and I just, I, I actually don't have anything new to say, but I just want to reiterate some of the major points that other people have mentioned. Um, and as a way of emphasizing them. Um, I, I wanted to go back to Julia Agri, who is the pediatric nurse, who points out how aggressive this new strain of the variant is. What we know about germs is that what their job is to do is to infect people. And who are the easiest people to infect? Those who have not been vaccinated. And we've seen that it is a rising case of pediatric cases right now that's occurring. And that's because they are unvaccinated. Now, they may be having very mild symptoms, but as she also pointed out, the ICU beds are full and at capacity. And even if they have mild symptoms, we heard Wendy Millar Page, and I'm so sorry Wendy for what you are going through, that there's the long-term effects of COVID that we don't fully understand yet. So even if our children get mild cases, we don't know if there are going to be long-term effects associated with this, associated with their brain development, associated with their lung development, associated with their cardiac development. We don't know that. And then I also wanted to point out for, um, Suzanne, as well as Elizabeth, who are saying, you know, masks, they work, they're easy. And, and I appreciate, as an educator myself, I appreciate that it is difficult to be able to teach a child with a mask, but all of our teachers have shown how creative and tenacious they are in the face of these circumstances. They have found ways to be able to reach out and teach our children. And I think we should applaud all of them and support them and they will continue to find ways to support them. And this isn't forever. We just have to do this for a little while longer. And believe me, I'm fatigued. I don't want to wear a mask. But I am also in higher ed, like another person that called in. And I have sent in my vaccination card to prove that I am vaccinated. But while I am indoors on campus, I have to be masked. I can take it off if I'm outside, but while I am indoors, while I am teaching my students, I have to be masked and they have to be masked as well because we know how aggressive this is. So I would implore all of you to please do the thing that is effective, that we know that works and require the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you. Next up we have Justin Gamble. Mr. Gamble, can you hear us? Mr. Gamble, can you hear us?
Yes, I am, sorry to keep you waiting.
No worries.
So I, I did just want to point out a couple of other things, um, especially with the, the comment about the long COVID, um, in kids. What I've been reading is that it's prevalent in somewhere between ten and fifteen percent of, um, children cases. And that's obviously new data and a new study and I've heard that even, uh, Children's Hospital has opened up a special has opened up a specialized clinic to track those kinds of numbers and cases and follow up with that. So being a father of two kids that have had COVID and having it in the house here, having a lot of family members affected by the pandemic, I've just, I'm kind of at a place where we wear masks whenever we're inside. And I would hope that that would be what the school would go with going forward. And I just really believe that as a town, like we owe this to our kids who can't make the decision themselves. And I never would want to say to my son that I, you know, I sent him to school and he was exposed and then he just told, asked me like, well, Dad, why won't we all wear a mask? And yeah, it's just, it's definitely an issue that I think hits everybody very closely. And I really appreciate all of the calls tonight just because I've learned so much and have heard a lot of compassion and emotion. And I really, thank you for the time to speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was under the understanding that we had gone past the time that we had for open comment. I do have, well, actually now I have two, but one is a repeat caller.
We're not going to be doing repeat callers. We'll just do the, you have two other ones. But we'll cut it off at the next two that are already logged in.
Not doing repeating calls if you can't hear them. But whoever just, if there was one, take the last person.
So right now, we have one last person. It's Nick Agri. Nick, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, you're on.
Just a couple of things. I find it kind of comical that the same people that last year wanted to send their kids back to school at all costs, even volunteering to let their kids sit on the floor when they weren't enough chairs, these are the same people that now have a problem with sending their kids to school wearing a mask. Beyond that, it's what these kids crave at this young age. And a lot, you know, everyone here knows this better than me, but it's structure. And the last thing we need to do is send these kids to school unmasked and risk having to shut down the schools in a month, breaking that structure up. It would be silly for us to think that the teachers and the school staff and the Towns Board of Health can do all this contract tracing. They're already taxed as it is. They do have a hard enough job as it is without a pandemic. I don't think we can ask any more of them other than just to keep themselves safe and keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we moving on from public comment to deliberation? I would ask that the two remote school committee call-ins raise their hand in the Zoom meeting so that Patty can recognize and will let me know that you are or wish to speak. And I will recognize you in that fashion. Does anyone have any motion to make or any questions of Ms. Howard or Meredith Hurley? Ms. Swope?
Meredith, I have a couple of questions. One is, I understand that Delta is transmissible even from children that are vaccinated. Right?
Meredith, you're on mute, Meredith.
Sorry, guys. Yeah, we've definitely seen, we've seen transmission in, whereas in the Alpha and Beta variants, we were seeing kind of this as well. With the Delta variant, we have seen kind of household spread. So, you know, then infected by Delta, then goes home and has the opportunity that they can still infect. You know, on the flip side of that and like full transparency, we're also, we are unable to measure how many people had the vaccine and didn't get infected. So, you know, that's also something that comes up in this conversation that I think is important to, at the very least, acknowledge that we do look at that side of things and know that, that, you know, I will tell you, it was utterly disappointing to me when in March, when we saw the breakthrough, it felt like we were just starting to come to a good place. So yes, it can, with the variant that we've seen now, in my experience of doing the contract tracing.
Yeah, yeah, I guess, right. That's a concern only because lots of children here, lots of families here have kids that are in junior and senior high school and as well as elementary. So that's why I'm asking that. So for those that are vaccinated, and thank goodness for many that are, certainly appreciative of that. Families, some family members aren't vaccinated. So that, you could pass that on to them or other people that are more compromised. That's what I thought. I just wanted to hear you say that. Thank you. Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry. If you could just yield.
Sorry.
For the purpose of discussion, I would like to make a motion that we follow Lisa Superintendent Howard's recommendations, that we institute a mask mandate for all students with the exception of those who have a medical need, which they would need to verify as per our current procedures and those who are vaccinated.
So if I'm...
I'll second the motion.
Just so I understand...
So we have discussion.
Right. I'm just trying to understand the motion. So you're asking to accept the temporary differential mask policy?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for your second. Okay, further discussion? Does anyone have anything they would like to say? Ms. Swope?
Can I make an amendment to the motion?
You don't have the floor. Again, raise your hand through the screen. And Ms. Swope has been recognized.
I'm sorry.
Is there any other, Meredith, is there anything else in place about being tested even if you are vaccinated? In other words, is there any strategy for some kind of, even if you wanted to be tested, could you be tested if you were vaccinated?
Yeah, there's no reason not to be tested. Like, there's no, there's nothing to say that people don't get tested even if they're vaccinated. The current CDC guideline is that if you are vaccinated and you've been exposed, so I'm working from like the public health perspective, a little bit different than what DSE is, but from the public health perspective in the general population, if you have been exposed and are a vaccinated person, you do not need to be tested. Given the increase in, or the breakthrough cases that we have seen, I am recommending people go and get tested even if they've been vaccinated. But it's not where is before, under quarantine guidelines. It's either mandated or a 14-day quarantine.
Yeah, if we continue to see breakthroughs, that's, I think, going to be important consideration. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Barry?
Yes, I just want to, I was having a hard time hearing Ms. Powell, so I just want to clarify my understanding of her motion and then also see if we can make an amendment to that motion. So I understand her motion to be that she wants to make a motion to support Lisa's recommendation that we go with the differentiated mask option. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment that we implement that mask option for a total of one month and then we reevaluate based on community spread, community vaccination rates, as well as the updated guidelines from DSE regarding the test and stay policy.
Do I have a second on that motion? Bearing none? I'm sorry, the amendment fails.
I'll second the motion. My hand up here. I'll second it.
Gotcha. Okay, I guess we'll be discussing the amendment to the motion. Does anyone want to be heard on that? Ms. Swope?
We went back and forth on this last year, all the time. And it was a study. And then we were going to study this. And then we had to change our position. I really think, I mean, I don't think it's a good idea. So I would prefer if we have a...
I'm asking to put the policy in place for a month, Suzanne, once we have new information in place.
You're asking us to, you're asking the school to study that again. And I think you're asking it because you think that you're going to, or am I wrong about this? That you would like to see the mask restrictions lifted? That is the purpose of this?
That is correct, Suzanne.
Okay, I'd like to be heard on it. I think where we're talking about, the recommendation was a temporary differential of the mask policy. So I think the amendment's moot because I think we'll be revisiting this as more data arises. So I do agree with your motion, but I don't want to set a time limit on it because I think things could change and we could be meeting back here next week. So it's kind of moot because, again, it's a temporary differentiation mask policy. So as data comes in or more guidance comes in from DSE or CDC, we may be changing it. So, I mean, I don't want to pin us into one month. I want to see where the data takes us and how successful we are in preventing the spread in our schools. So...
Things could change automatically in the town. I mean, just in the town, myself and the Board of Health could put in a mandate next month because it got so bad. And we don't know that...
Well, let's hope that we don't have to do that. Our kids should have been in school last September.
I have the floor, please.
Waited until January to do that.
I believe I had the floor.
So I don't want to get into another situation where we are regretting our decisions.
Okay. Who knows what's going to happen in the next month? As Meredith told us, we went up from 20 cases a month to 30 cases a month to 40 cases so far already in half a month. So, you know, the Board of Health has not met on this issue yet. Nor has the council had a recommendation from the Board of Health to maybe put in anything else yet. So things could change. Right now, we're asking for a mandatory mask mandate.
Differentiate.
With the differentiality policy, which means that the elementary school pre-K through six is going to have mask, you know, mandate that they have to have them. And there has to be proof of vaccination and other things for any middle schooler and high schoolers to not wear a mask. And I think following DSE is the right thing to do right now.
But the DSE guidelines say that they strongly recommend, they don't have a mask mandate in place for K through six. Neither does the governor. So the DSE guidelines are that they strongly recommend that K through six students wear masks. And that's what I would propose.
So just as a, through the chair, just as a point, Julie, sometimes it's hard to hear, it's hard for you to be able to tell us that you want to speak. So if you could just do that, hand raise and Patty will watch it just so you make sure you get your comment in.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just a disadvantage because I'm remote and I'm having trouble navigating the Zoom app on my phone. So I'm having trouble finding where that hand is.
Not a problem. Just as a point of clarity to...
Yeah, my hand's been raised and I haven't been recognized. So just throwing that out there.
So through the chair, just a point of clarity. In a temporary mask mandate, whether it's in the mandate, whether it's in the policy or not, the school district, including Meredith and Tara as our COVID lead nurse and myself, will be meeting, not monthly, but daily, and having conversations about the variant and any uptick in the community, which is exactly what we did last year. The difference between last year is when the state of emergency was removed by the governor of Massachusetts at the end of the school year, the mask policy was no longer a relevant policy. And that's the purpose of us meeting now. So you could put language into any type of a policy that talks about reviewing it, but it will be reviewed on a daily basis based on what we do within the school system and following the protocols and having to make sure that all of our students are compliant and our staff is compliant if there's any change that we're listening to the town side as well.
Mr. Kapabianco, I'm sorry. I didn't realize your hand was raised.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank all the callers today for being respectful on all sides. We greatly appreciate it. The past year has been very difficult as a school committee member. The amount of texts and calls we've received at all spectrums has been stressful. And I assure you, we're all trying our best. Here's my issue with this. Of course, masks stop the spread. There's no doubt about that. And if we wanted to be bold, we should mandate the vaccine. I agree with Ms. Chavez. But a year ago, a number of us spoke and we said, we're going to follow the guidelines. Red is red, yellow is yellow, green is green. And we're just going to follow it like a book because that's the guidelines. And I'm just curious why are we changing that when this whole time we followed the guidelines to the best of our ability? And now everyone's saying follow the CDC. But this group went, sir, a year now, we've been following the DSE guidelines like a book. That's just my only confusion here.
Mr. Marchucci?
I totally agree. We went through this a number of times last year. And every time we went through it, it was follow the guidelines, DSE guidelines, to a T, to a T. Why are we changing this now? As I always said at the beginning of all this... So at the beginning of all this, what we really had to do is say that we're going to, not even adopt a policy, just send these guidelines out and follow. That's all we have to do. Very, very easy.
May I respond? I'm sorry.
So just if we follow, if we just follow these guidelines, send them out, no policy, and continue to go on? It strongly recommends masks. Totally up to the parent or the teacher or the staff member, whatever, for them to make the decision. So I say my vote would be to follow these guidelines as we have been since the beginning of the pandemic.
I have to...
Point of clarity, point of order. We need to be talking about amendment? Or can we talk about amendment?
That's why I'm handing off the gavel to you. I spoke to Ms. Howard earlier today. And she spoke to DSE. And DSE's position was that, and if I'm wrong, correct me. Maybe I should let you explain it, what their clarification was.
And we also have Paul Hardnet on the phone, who's the school's attorney. So as I explained at the beginning of the meeting, DSE's strong recommendation and all the bullet points that they provided you is their recommendation to the school committee to implement. So they're not strongly recommending that you strongly recommend. They're strongly recommending that, and trust me when I tell you, I had to phone a friend to understand it because I've read it over so many times and they flood you with so much information. And when you read it from my seat or when you read it from the seat of a parent, which I happen to do both jobs on a daily basis, it can mean two different things. So I did contact the Department of Education just to ask, am I reading this correctly? Is the Department of Education strongly recommending that we strongly recommend? Or are they strongly recommending that we do what the bullet points are? And then figure out based on your own community. And I am a strong believer of do not compare Winthrop to any place else but Winthrop because you don't live here and work here. And we cannot compare us to Revere. You cannot compare us to Chelsea. It is not apples to apples, no matter how you look at it. And I look at it from the seat of protecting all children. And I'm not comparing myself to another community or ourselves. And I asked them that very question. Are you recommending that we recommend this? Or are you recommending that we put in place what you're recommending? And do it in a manner that fits our school district? And the answer to that question was, we are recommending that you do what we are recommending in a manner that fits for your school district and is doable based on the structure of your school district, your community COVID numbers. And that's why it's going to be different in each community, whether it's a mandate universally, whether it's a mandate that we flex on depending upon what our needs are in our community or whether we're just recommending it. And I don't know if Attorney Hardnet, if... And I require that clarity. And trust me when I tell you, I do this every day, anywhere from eight to 10 hours a day. And I was confused by it. So I totally understand the confusion or concern about how we're supposed to implement it. So I don't know if you want to hear from Paul Brian on it at all?
Paul, would you like to weigh in? Attorney Hardnet?
He's still there, right? Patty?
Yes.
He probably has to unmute.
Paul, can you hear us?
A couple of things I'd like to point out. One, in my conversation with the superintendent,
One, in my conversation with the superintendent, I agree with her that the manner in which D E S I has strongly recommended is misleading. There, I think the superintendent accurately characterized what the actual recommendation is and that they are strongly recommended that in fact you adopt the mask policy that Lisa has brought forward. The other issue that has not been discussed here is that this past week, Meredith Hurley, in her capacity as the Director of Public Health, has adopted a policy that is in place for town buildings and town employees. In my opinion, school buildings are town buildings. Teachers, staff, and employees of the school department are town employees. So as it relates to the policy that was adopted last week, my opinion is that the Board of Health under Chapter 111, Sections 95 through 105, has significant authority to act as it relates to infectious diseases. The position that the Director of Public Health has taken with regard to her masking policy concerning town buildings and town employees, in my opinion, applies to the teachers, to the staff, and other employees of the school department. Obviously, there's an obligation to bargain the impact of the policy that Miss Hurley issued, but that only applies to employees. It does not apply to students. And so the school committee at this point in time should really be focusing on the impact and what you're going to do as it relates to the students' masking policy. Because in my opinion, we could take the position that there's already a policy in place as it relates to school employees. Thank you.
Chairman. Mr. Marchucci.
I've just wasted two hours of my time. Why did we have this meeting?
I think it relates, what Mr. Hardnett is saying is that, if you'd like to hear my answer, you asked me the question.
We don't have a policy.
Chairman, Mr. Capobianco has his hand raised.
I recognize him when I finish, but the answer is it applies to.
Excuse me, Mr. Capobianco, the chair is talking. The chair is still speaking.
Oh, I thought you recognized Patty. I apologize.
No, that's okay.
I, I believe that Mr. Hardnett is correct. The information or the policy would reflect on students and that the town's Board of Health or, or health nurse has stated it applies to school personnel. So we're, we're here tonight for students, not as much for the current employees and staff that are in the buildings. That's why we're here.
Then why wasn't that information shared at the beginning of the meeting opposed to sitting through two hours, public comments, emails? I mean, that's a, a piece of information that basically should have led off the meeting, in my opinion.
Well, it, it only has to do with employees. We're talking about masking for students. That's what we're talking about this evening. And.
We were talking about employees at the beginning. A number of folks brought up the teachers, so that's not necessarily.
Right, and we're in the middle of discussion. So this is discussion. So we've gotten the information and this is the discussion portion of the meeting.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add something to that about the policy?
Yes.
So we, so that policy was put in place following more than one employee testing positive and being unmasked in the exposure from the, the workplace. So that was what prompted that, that mandate that we put in place last week with the, with the opportunity for exemptions.
Thank you.
It's, it's my understanding that we did have case of positivity in the police department, case positivity in D P W, the town manager, and the health officer had put in a directive that employees of the town have to wear masks when they're in their building.
Correct.
Okay. That has nothing to do with the students and we need to vote on whether the students are today.
That's what the purpose of the meeting is and clarification came through our attorney. Ms. Swope.
I understood that this was, meeting was about masking for students also and that that's where we have spent our time tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Hardnett, for clarifying if there was a, if there was a misunderstanding about that. I guess my comment is, I would, I'm really for universal masking. I, I mean, I think it's the safest thing. I do understand that when kids have gone through getting vaccinated, they feel like they've done the right thing and that if we, if community spreads is, it doesn't move and it stays down and those kids don't transfer and we don't, I'm losing my voice, we don't get increased COVID cases and Lisa's always said she's going to stay on that religiously along with Meredith, then I would be inclined to support this recommendation. But it, it's, it comes with some hesitancy about high school kids and I, I just worry about them, you know, and I worry about their families and, and their asymptomatic maybe behaviors that can get passed on to those that are not masked, not, not vaccinated. And that is my concern about families. So that's, that's my hesitancy about it.
And can I call for a vote on the amendment?
Yes. We're going to be voting on the amendment. Is there any further discussion prior to voting on the amendment?
Mr. Perrin, may, may I make a comment?
Yes, Attorney Hardnett.
Just to address the issue raised by Mr. Capobianco, if you examine the policy that was adopted by Director Hurley and compare it to the policy that the superintendent is recommending, the policy is the same for all intents and purposes as it relates to employees. What is different about the superintendent's recommendation and having sat here and listened to the comments from the superintendent and the public is as it relates to students. That's really the significant issue that's being discussed here. The policy as the superintendent is recommending and the policy adopted by the director, Director Hurley is the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardnett.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Mr. Capobianco has left the meeting as well.
Do we have a quorum?
Is Julie still on?
Yes, I raised my hand.
Oh, Julie raised her hand.
Go ahead, Julie.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to speak. I understand the concerns regarding masking and mandating masking. My biggest concern around this was around the loss of learning and the potential quarantining of children. I'm interested to understand more about what the stay in, the test and stay policy is all about. I am disappointed in a couple of things. I'm disappointed in that we are not taking into account our community spread at the moment, which we did last fall. I'm disappointed that we kept our children out of school until January because D E S I required us to do so or recommended we did do so, and so we did. I continue to be challenged by the fact that when we look at the numbers regarding children and COVID and, and breakthrough cases, even, it, it, we're, we're, it's being inflated by the media and we're listening to that. I'd like us to get back to the science and I'd also ask us to please, I know Lisa said that she would be reevaluating this on a regular basis. The last thing I want is for a child to get sick and the last thing I want is for educational disruption. But I think there's valid points too, to how educational disruption occurs with mask wearing when we're looking at our incoming and rising third graders who have been challenged for two years without proper in-person education and now they're going to be wearing masks. How are they going to have the building blocks for phonics? I also agree that it causes social problems for children as they're not able to read expressions on other children's faces. I'm not concerned about teenagers at all. They all have the ability to get vaccinated and I implore the public, if you are able to get vaccinated, please get vaccinated. It's going to protect the children in your life and it's going to make things better for the community as a whole. I implore us as a school committee to look at the community spread, to look at the numbers of vaccination and to make decisions based on these numbers, not based on what Revere, Lynn, and Chelsea are doing. They are not communities that are similar to us. They have multifamily dwellings living in the same space. Their vaccination rates are lower. That's what makes Winthrop different. And I will end on that note and I will not be leaving the call. So unlike my comrades who did, I, I apologize, but I will stay on board and I will close.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, the first will be the amendment that it's only in place for one month. Patty, can you call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Mr. Boncory?
No.
Ms. Swope?
No.
Ms. Powell?
No.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes, I mean, no, I'm sorry, no. Okay, now we'll vote on the underlying motion to accept the.
I'd like to be recognized.
Sure.
I wanted to address the, the, this, this motion. I appreciate all of the comments that people have made and I appreciate the passions that this issue has raised in our community. And I appreciate that parents want to be able to make decisions for their children. Unfortunately, we're in a situation where the decisions that we're making are affecting all of our children. And at this point in time, given what we are seeing in society at large, even though our rates are lower, what we're seeing is growth in this, in this variant and it is coming our way. And if, I feel that we need to take preventive measures now so that it doesn't come here.
Right.
And I want to be able to protect our children. This is about caring for all of them and yes, I appreciate the difficulties of children wearing masks all day and I appreciate that many of them have adapted to it. My own, my own grandchildren are included in that. My, my child, who's a high schooler who's vaccinated, wants to wear a mask. So, and she'll have that ability to do that. So I just, I feel that this is the best opportunity for our community to protect itself for the long haul.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any further comment?
I just want to agree with what Jen said. You know, we've listened to everybody and everybody has their points that they're making and, you know, whether you're this side or that side, you're passionate about it. I think it's the school committee's job to protect and to err on the side of caution. I have eight grandchildren that are under 12 in this town. I have more than that in the town, but I have eight under 12. Out of the eight, five of them have had the flu over the past week or two, to the point that two had to be hospitalized and one very seriously for a while had to be hospitalized and it was just the flu. So I don't want to see the COVID coming. They were tested, they did not have COVID, but one still had to go on a ventilator. And I don't want to see that happening to any other child in this community. And that's why I want to see masks until pre-K to six and, and that's why I seconded that motion and I will vote for it.
And just for a point of clarification, Lisa, there is an exemption if you're vaccinated or if you have a medical exemption, correct?
Correct, and, and.
It's not both, it's, it's four.
It's one or the other, it could be both. But that, that is what you have to produce and we will, we do have access to an application that, like I said before, that can make it somewhat simplistic. And I want to stress the fact that what you would be voting would be in line with the Department of Education's recommendations. However, it's also, the word temporary, I think, is important because we need to be able to go up or down. We need to be able, if the spread stays low and gets lower, to flex and release some of the recommendations and we also need to be able to turn on a dime if we feel as though we need to come back to the table. Other folks might do that for us. That would be if the Department of Ed makes a mandate on their own and says schools have to do this or if the governor of Massachusetts gives a universal mask mandate, which that is the direction, you know, that I think would be the next step if there was going to be something that happens before school opens. It's very difficult to sit in this seat and I appreciate the feedback from the parents, whether you're for masking, against masking. It's, it's a very difficult situation. Our job is to take care of every child and do our best to stay on the 50-yard line. If one word hasn't been used tonight, nobody talked anything about politics, it's out there, it's the elephant in the room, it's the underlying fight that everybody is in. Our job is to stay on the 50-yard line and do what is best for children. We have followed D E S I and D P H's guidelines and I'm going to go out on a limb and say we've done a damn good job over the last 18 months. And, and that's because we have followed the guidance. This is no different than following the guidance with the ability to tighten up or lighten up when we have to. We have not been shy to do that in the last 18 months. I am, I'm concerned that some folks feel as though we were here for a different reason. My job is to make recommendations based on gathering knowledge and information and providing it to a group of seven people that you all elected to sit here and make decisions for your children. I don't write policy or create policy. I provide information to a committee of people that writes policy for the children of the school district that I'm responsible to run. I don't tell people what to do. But again, staying on the 50-yard line is a very hard thing to do and I understand the passion on both sides. This is giving parents an element of choice in which if you want your child to wear a mask, vaccinated or not, you can. If your child is vaccinated and you want to provide us with that information, you can. We put policies in place in our school district every day. Schools cannot run without rules. I don't know what large organization folks are around that does not have rules to keep children or people in your organization safe. If we let go of all the rules in the school district, we wouldn't be able to function. We have rules about attendance, we have rules about smoking, we have rules about touching each other, we have rules about harassment. I don't hear a lot of people complaining about those rules, you just follow them. Kids are much smarter than adults in some fashion. I know our kids will wear masks. Why? Because we tell them and we tell them it's a rule. It's not the kids that are pushing back on us. I don't think this is a forever thing. And for those people who want to put blame on people if something happens, we can't control COVID and if you think we can, you need to read a little deeper because we are not in control of it. We can put mandates and policies and, and strategies and mitigation in place to keep your children safe. If parents don't feel comfortable with sending their kids to the Winthrop Public Schools, you have the option to homeschool your child. You also have the option to enroll your child in another school district. We're doing everything we can to have you keep your kids here. Where if one person can say we didn't go, do everything we could to protect kids in the last 18 months, you weren't paying attention. So pay attention, continue to speak up and be grateful for what we have in this community. We have a low incident rate right now. We need to make sure it stays that way and that's what we're trying to do. And that will conclude my attention for this afternoon.
Julie has her hand up.
Take a vote. Julie.
You got to turn the clock.
Sorry, oh, Julie, Julie, hold on. I'm sorry, you, I, my volume is down. Go ahead.
No, I just want to, I just want to say two more things and, you know, unfortunately or fortunately, I should say, children and people of all ages are able to go to Gillette, they're able to go to Fenway, they're able to go to basically any concert hall in America without a mask. And yet, we're sending our children back to school with masks. And then they're going to eat, they're going to eat lunch unmasked and they're not going to be super socially distanced. So I'm just struggling with the hypocrisy of all of this and, and I just think it's interesting that we're going to choose to mask when we think it's, it's important and, and, and not mask when we want to. So I think, you know, if you can protect kids in school all you want, but when they go to Fenway Park on the weekend and they don't mask, you know, then you're going to have to deal with that. So I guess that's, that's all I have to say on this.
One quick thing. Ten years from now, I bet we won't be talking about COVID vaccines, any more than we're talking about measles vaccines or chickenpox or any other vaccine. It'll, we'll all be vaccinated from this one, but there'll be another one or there'll be another one. And so I do think, I do think that we're trying to do something, as Lisa said, that's balanced. Hopefully, we'll work for all of you, as many of you as we can and, and we just got to stay on it because it's, it'll always vary in this whole year and we'll be going through this, I think, unfortunately, for another year.
Okay, so the motion on the floor at this point is to accept the, what are we calling this?
The superintendent.
The superintendent's recommendation of.
Differentiated.
Differential.
Temporary differentiated.
Temporary differential mask policy. So Patty, will you please call the roll? This, the, we've already decided the amendment had failed.
Yes. Ms. Barry?
I'm sorry, no.
Mr. Boncory?
Yes.
Ms. Swope?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Perrin?
Yes.